We are missing two planning commission members this evening, which is significant because, irrespective of how many planning commissioners are here, in order to pass a site plan, we need five votes.
Okay.
So that is something to be aware of as we proceed tonight. The first item on the agenda requiring a substantive vote is the approval of tonight's agenda, which is before us. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimously approved. And the next item is the approval of the minutes from our last two meetings, March 19th, well actually, what is that?
March 19th is the special meeting.
Right, March 19th and April 29th. So we'll first take the March 19th minutes. If anyone has any comments or revisions, please let us know. Anyone have anything?
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes from March 19th as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's unanimously approved. And now we'll proceed to the minutes from May 29, 2018. Same question, any comments or revisions to propose? Anyone? Okay, all those in favor say, oh, we need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Again, unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is the matter of public hearing for revisions to prohibited uses under home occupations. We've had a lot of discussion about that. This is the public hearing after that discussion. Hank, would you be good enough to give us an overview of where we are and what we're voting on tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this is simply a matter of going back to the language that you had prior to this. During the incarnation of the new zoning ordinance, they had added attorneys in real estate to a list of prohibited occupations for homes. Those were not there before. Based on the discussion and the flavor of the planning commission, it was determined those should come out. This is the public hearing that we're required to have before that amendment is made. So at this point in time, you can take public comment and then your recommendation to the city commission would be forthcoming after that.
Okay, great. We'll open public participation. Does anyone have anything to speak to regarding these revisions on prohibited uses under home occupations? Any public comment?
And again, Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of the public, the only thing that we're doing is we're taking out law office or real estate office out of the prohibited home occupation section.
Right, right. Any public comment or participation? Okay, and public participation will be closed. Any discussion amongst ourselves? We've discussed this fairly thoroughly.
Move to recommend adoption to the city commission.
Okay, to strike real estate offices and law offices from the prohibited public uses. Any second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that is five to two. So the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's proceed to item number six on the agenda, and this is the matter of public hearing for revisions to the wireless regulations. Hank, do you want to give us a similar overview?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, you have in front of you also a memo from the city attorney describing that the proposed Small Cell Wireless Communications Facilities Deployment Act was originally introduced in 2017. Modifications to the original bill were made during the senate committee hearings. Senate Bill 637 cleared the senate March 15, 2008 by a 33 to three vote and has been referred to the House Committee on Energy Policy. Although Senate Bill 637 has been opposed by Pro-Tech and other municipal interests, it appears the act is moving forward. Although the bill has not yet been enacted, it's expected that it could have immediate effect. There is one step that we are recommending be taken immediately if the city wants to limit the height of utility poles in the right-of-way. And basically, what it says after that is that forty-foot utility poles and antennas on more than five feet above utility poles would be the limits, subject to zoning regulations. The enclosed ordinance amendment would incorporate the height limits under Senate Bill 637 into the zoning ordinance by establishing those limits as maximum heights for the use of utility poles in the public right-of-way. It would also require the use of stealth equipment. Stealth equipment is simply that equipment which is disguised to look like, some poles that look like flagpoles, some look like trees, some, there's different types of stealth equipment that's available there for wireless communications. And by incorporating that into our ordinance, it's actually preemptive.
Okay, so, thank you for the explanation in lay language, so the public and everyone appreciates what are we really achieving here?
Right, what we're really achieving here, very simply, is we're keeping the heights down on the poles and we're keeping a visual proliferation of equipment out of the public right-of-way.
Okay, and it's a prophylactic measure so that this ordinance is going to be consistent with what is expected to be new law and regulations?
That is correct, and not only that, it'll insulate the city against any issues going forward.
Okay, so with that explanation, I'll open up this matter for public participation or discussion. Would anyone like to make any public comment? Okay, we will, sir? Before you speak, your name and address, please.
Ray Fraser, 13320 Vernon. I think I heard him say forty feet, that seems kind of high. Can confirm that?
Yeah.
Do we have anything that's forty feet now?
Yes.
Not the normal utility poles or?
Some of them, yes.
Okay.
And let me, I'll follow up on your question, sir. Forty feet is consistent with applicable standards and norms, not only in this community, but throughout other communities, correct?
That is correct, and not only that, it comes with the recommendation of the city attorney and the city planning consultant.
Okay, anything else, sir?
I personally have seen, I don't know how high they are, but I don't like the cover-up where they make it look like a tree. They never look like trees to me, but.
Hank, do you want to address that one?
Sure, that wouldn't be something that we would undertake in our, like, right-of-ways, like going down Scotia, you're not going to see a bunch of fake trees because that just wouldn't work. But what it does is it, like, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but like, for example, the tower at the 12 Mile in Coolidge, which is the police station tower, that's a flagpole. So you would see more things like that where they would be necessary rather than that. There's also stealth equipment, which would be that which is mounted to the poles, which would take a form that would be dissimilar from what you would expect, so it would be less obtrusive to the eye.
Thank you. Any other public comment, participation, questions? Okay, public participation will be closed. Would any of us like to discuss this? Sheldon?
Question. What happens if the statute doesn't pass, is the ordinance nevertheless effective?
Yes.
Okay, is it permissible under current law?
Forty-foot poles, yes.
The limitation?
We're just putting the limitation on it, yes.
Okay, so it's legal now, but we don't have an ordinance that has that limitation in?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're providing it whether or not, pardon me, depending on whether or not the state statute preempts us?
It's the opinion.
As it stands right now, we're putting a forty-foot limit on towers?
That's correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there any, does the city have any say in the stealth appearance?
Limited, not as of yet. And the thing is, is that there are so many different stealth products out there that we don't have a list of what would be or wouldn't be approved. And because it's governed by the Public Service Commission, we don't have as much say as we would normally, it's not like we would have a site plan review where you can get down to brass tacks and say, yes, we like this, we don't like this, this is what we have. So basically, that's where you would be in that situation, but as far as actually specifically limiting it to A, B, or C, we do not have that at this time.
So the state sets what is stealth and what isn't stealth?
No.
And then they're allowed to use whatever they deem appropriate?
Within that, that's what it would be, because we don't have the final form of the bill if anything comes out. But what we're doing is we're limiting to the extent we can, and if we have to make an additional modification later, we will, but at least we'll have the heights set.
Okay. I am curious about the origin of the forty-foot standard. Is the forty-foot standard something that is born solely out of the proposed legislation? Or is the forty-foot standard something that is an otherwise well-known conventional standard?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, and the reason for that is, is that when the city attorney recommended it, it was what's being talked about, what's here, in case they want to go higher with it, like, for example, if you had a telephone pole, the telephone pole at forty feet. If you had something sixteen feet, that would look extremely out of place and you would, it would be a little bit jarring to the eye. So as a result, by limiting what we have based on what we know, we're ahead of the game.
Okay, and you're comfortable, Hank, based on your due diligence, that we would not, with that forty-foot height restriction, be an outlier of any sort in terms of?
I am confident of that, and I'm also confident that the city planner and the city attorney did their due diligence before recommending it to us.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we ask for a motion? Okay, anyone to make a motion?
Move to accept as is. Or we recommend?
We're recommending.
You recommend it to the city? Make, recommend approval to the city commission.
Second.
Any discussion, guys? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, we do make that recommendation. Okay, the next matter is the issue of short, of the discussion, this is not a public hearing, although certainly a public comment would be welcome, of the short-term rental ordinance. Hank, I don't think most of the members of the planning commission know too much about this other than what's in our packet, so why don't you give a overview on this?
So here's basically, let me get to that page, but here's basically what's going on right now. This comes up for several reasons. We have had some Airbnb activity in the city in the past, we've had some problems with it, we've had some regulatory issues. And what's happened is, is that we feel we're at a point with this now where it would be beneficial to study to decide what the policy is going to be going forward. And the planning commission would then want to make a recommendation to the city commission as to what the findings are. In order to do that, we're currently asking the planning commission to recommend to the city commission that you adopt, that the city commission adopt a moratorium for 180 days to allow the city, to allow the planning commission to study the issue, be supplied with materials to make a decision on it. But in the interim time, we didn't want to have proliferation of Airbnb activity, which has picked up significantly in the recent, in very recent.
And the moratorium specifically would do what?
The moratorium would prevent Airbnbs from being activated and used in the city of Huntington Woods, because right now it falls under the, like, rooming houses, boarding houses, and it's just not addressed as that, because it's a single-family residence, having more than one family in there is not a permitted use. But what this would do is, this would let the public have an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they like it, whether it's a problem for them. And it would allow the planning commission to receive data and information from Ben Carlisle, and if you would like him here at a future meeting as a result of this, then we could arrange that as well with the presentation. So having said that, basically what we're looking for is, is that we have something here that's somewhat uncharted territory, it's room rental or house rental on short term, it, you know, do we require leases, do we require, you know, what do we require? We just haven't had to deal with it much here in the past. So we want to get on top of this and find out what the flavor of the community is, what the flavor of the planning commission is, and then act, but we'd like to do it without having to be rushed into a decision that we may regret, hence the moratorium request.
Can I, sorry, go on?
How would that be regulated long-term or even in the moratorium?
Well, in the moratorium, it's just very simple. I mean, you check the Airbnb listings and you check that and see if anything shows up on there, they have to cease operations. They don't have business licenses, would business licenses be required? It's that type of thing. So as far as regulating it, the moratorium would mean no, they're just honored any that are permissible. So we did have one that was shut down in the not-too-recent past because the neighbors were having some issues as a result of the use. So what we would, what we would just propose is simply that you recommend to the planning, to the city commission, the 180-day moratorium, which as you know is not much in the time of planning times, that's six meetings. So at that point in time, we would start getting, you know, our city planning consultant from Carlisle Wardman working on some information for you, and then we would visit it until they were satisfied that you had a decision and adequate input from the public as to whether or not it's a viable use or whether it should not be permitted in the city of Huntington.
Before we open it up for public participation, does anyone have any further questions for Hank, because I have a couple? Sheldon?
This is maybe a different way to state what Andy and Mike address. It's not a permitted special use.
That's correct.
It's not a permitted home occupation. It's, so it's not a permitted use, period?
Yeah.
At least in residential areas?
Yeah.
Which by definition Airbnb is.
That's correct.
Okay.
But it is not specifically called out in anything. So what they want to do is, they want a short-term rental. Basically, what we're looking at is what the policy is going to be. A lot of them right now, you could supply with some information that we have from Ben Carlisle in your packets, and it gives you what works, what they're doing, the uses that they have with it, whether or not it would apply to Huntington Woods. But during the time that this is being studied, we have received calls specifically from people that are looking to purchase homes in the city of Huntington Woods with the intent of turning them into Airbnbs and renting them out.
Okay, my, I guess my theory here is that if it's not a permitted use, it's not a permitted special use, it's not a permitted residential race, use or business use in a residential area, that what we're saying with the moratorium is, really, don't do this. When there's already enforcement mechanisms, it seems, that you described, that are already on the books to permit it, I'm not saying we shouldn't study it, I'm certainly not saying that, because I don't know what the repercussions of that permitted use might be.
The enforcement mechanisms that we have right now are not as.
Robust.
Yeah, robust as we would like.
Okay.
So having said that, rather than have that and deal with that and have our residents have to deal with that, we would just prefer that there be a moratorium, and that way that we, everybody can study it and the answer is just no, at least for the time being. It may change in six months, the planning commission may find and the residents may all want it, and as a result of that, then that would be the flavor of the residents and the flavor of the planning commission, then we would go forward at that point.
Subject to further discussion.
Absolutely.
And research. My question is, what are, what are the negative impacts of, assuming there aren't fourteen on a single block, or that sort of thing? I mean, there's all sorts of definitional issues here.
Right, some of the experiences that we've had with Airbnb up till now are late arrivals, people renting people's houses out for parties, if you will, short-stay type of things where, you know, people might rent them for an afternoon. I mean, these are things that we have, that we've had calls about, questions about, and that, and we've had actual experience with some of those. Part of the question you're asking is what we hope to answer in the next six months. So we would hope to get you more information and more data as far as what's happening with that. In a city like Royal Oak, where they have a large expanse of residential stock, you know, they might have less of a problem with it because it may be well-spread out and you don't run into that. Huntington Woods is 1.46 square miles, of which 20% of the land is encompassed by the zoo and the golf course. So when we, when we see it and when we have it, it hits a little bit closer to home. So as a result, we would like to have some input on that and see where the, where the public and where this planning commission wants to go, and recommend the appropriate action to the city commission. That's, hence, that's really what we're doing. But the information that you're seeking, which are all very valid and good questions, are what we would hope to uncover within the study period, which would be the next six months.
Any other questions for Hank?
One on this, how do we separate Airbnb from the more common rental activity that might go on? For example, someone's gone for the winter and they rent their house out for six months or?
There's a period of time where they do that, and again, that's another thing we want to study as well. But Airbnb is short-term rental, it can be as little as a few hours, it can be a day, it can be overnight, it can be a week, and as a result, you constantly have people coming and going, and it's been expressed to staff that, that's somewhat unnerving to the neighbors.
No, no, I get, I get the Airbnb part, I'm asking how, when we, what is the language of the moratorium specifically that limits the activities?
The moratorium would be drafted to say that just won't be any Airbnbs operational, and Airbnb would be defined as short-stay. Short-stay would be, in the language worked out by the city attorney, the city planner, but it wouldn't be anything less than, I would, I would say, 30 days, two weeks, a week.
That sounds like anything under 30 days.
Yeah, you know, something like that, and I mean, you could incorporate that into your recommendation to the city commission, but whatever you recommend to the city commission, they would take, they certainly have the option to modify, they have the authority certainly to adopt as-is and place a moratorium on it, and they may come up with some conditions of their own that they'd like to see. But by recommending that, it lets them know that the planning commission would like to undertake the study of that and feel that it's a valid concern, and that would alleviate the fears of the residents.
Hank, just a quick question.
Sure.
What was the genesis of this issue? Why is it before us now?
It's before you for a couple of reasons. One is we've had interest expressed in people purchasing homes specifically for that purpose. So we would have Airbnb homes that would not be owned or occupied at all, that would be in the city of Huntington Woods and rented out on a short-term basis.
Is there another reason why we're talking about it today?
The other reason is, is that we've had situations where there has been Airbnbs in Huntington Woods in the past, and we've had complaints from residents that abut those uses.
Not to be too inquisitive about this, but why is it on the agenda now? Why didn't it arise several months ago?
Because of the interest, well, because we had the one incident and we.
What incident was that?
The incident where we had the Airbnb and then that was, that was dealt with and the Airbnb is no longer in operation. Periodically, they'll pop up on Airbnb that somebody's doing it, and then we had acted in a similar manner. Why it's coming to you before and why you're getting it now in June of 2018 is, is that there's been significant interest expressed by people for doing this, and before we go ahead and just allow it, we feel that it would be in the best interest to protect residents and at least live in the situation.
So let me get this straight. So first of all, just out of pure curiosity, who's out on Airbnb monitoring it? Someone from the city's out there checking it out?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I think if I'm understanding your concern correctly, Aaron, is you don't, you're worried about something where, you know, House A is having a kitchen and a whole addition done, and they want to rent a house in Huntington Woods from someone who does normally rent a house for six months or eight months because their house is being redone and they don't want to move out.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that happens all the time.
It happens all the time. So, so your question, I think, is very valid about, hey, let's make that timeframe so that you've got, if you have a resident in the city who's trying to make a short-term rental of three, four months because they're having their house redone, we don't preclude them from doing that.
And that, that could be part of your recommendation?
At the same time, I do understand the concept of you're living, if you're living next to a house that is being used as a short-term rental, you have no idea who's coming in and out at all hours, showing up at 11 o'clock at night, staying for three days, you, you know, you get up in the morning and there's somebody else living in the house next door to you that you aren't expecting, four days later, it's a, it's a different person, so I fully.
That's also correct.
I fully understand the concern for that. Now, if I'm, if I'm correct, Sheldon, your point was, if I'm understanding your point correctly, we already, we already have language out there that is supposed to prevent this.
And that's supposed to, it can be interpreted.
But it could be interpreted.
It can be interpreted.
To prevent it, but it's not specifically stated.
That is correct.
Got it.
And I think the, one of the additional values of making such a suggestion as a moratorium is that it puts people on notice.
Right.
Who may be considering, you know.
Using their homeless life.
Using this home, or purchasing a home.
Or buying a home.
I'm more worried about that.
Purchasing a home specifically to use it as a short-term rental.
And I think that's valid by itself, but I would.
I agree.
I would, I frankly wouldn't support it unless there was a, in our recommendation, some suggestion about like 30, 30 days or less or something like that.
But Hank, I assume that when this is studied, if, it is going to be studied, subject to moratorium presumably, that, you know, our, Ben will appropriately balance the interests of the community versus the interest of the homeowner, meaning we are imposing, or the presumption is that there be some restriction or theoretical restriction on what the homeowner can do with his or her own property, which many people might be quite offended by when the notion of there being a nuisance or interference with someone else's enjoyment of his or her property might be speculative. So that's something that I think that we should look very carefully at.
Interfere.
When this study is done. And I, that's something that I would actually ask.
Absolutely.
To make Ben very aware of that we have to consider people's interest in their own property in addition to the community's interest.
Does anyone have any further discussion before we open it up to?
I just, I was thinking about, as people were bringing up these different points, and it's interesting that this comes after we've discussed people's occupations and their homes. I mean, in essence, we're looking at somebody who's creating a boarding house atmosphere, and that's not an occupation that's allowable within what we're recommending, correct?
Well, we're not recommending anything right now.
Right, but, but I think the two kind of dovetail out, and we need to keep in mind here that this is a community, and when you have so many people coming and going that you don't know, suddenly there is a breach in that, in that neighborhood community for the neighbors that are on the edge of that house. So that's something that we really need to keep in mind as we move forward with this recommendation.
Yeah, and those are all very valid points, and those are things that, you know, that we'll have the planning consultant address. And again, you know, within six months, you get several meetings. So at that point in time, you'll be provided with information, all the questions will come out, we'll have public input on it, and that'll allow everybody to have an opportunity to voice.
And one more thing before we open up for public, then speak a vote, is please ask Ben to make sure that he's looking at similarly situated communities when assessing what, you know, regulatory, constructionary.
Right, I mean, we won't be looking at New York City, we'll be looking at similar demographics.
Yeah, because the last time we went through the zoning ordinance redo, we had trouble getting there. So I would hope that his attention would focus on similar communities.
We would put that front and center.
Okay, any?
I have one more question as well. So in the materials that Ben did supply, he'd also referenced a bill that's currently in front of the senate.
Yeah.
That would regulate this statewide. Do we have any more? That was introduced in 2017, any sense of when that is working its way through, or I know it's hard to predict, but?
We do, we do not at this point, which was why we wanted to get on this, because there's just too many things that are going on, and we feel that this is something that the public wants, we should act, and if it's something the public doesn't want, we should also.
Right, I mean, just a personal opinion, statewide, you know, legislation on this is probably going to be kind of, it's kind of, kind of like a pickaxe to, you know, cutting through something rather than a scalpel, which is what's needed here. We don't want a state legislative pickaxe.
Well, as I read that, the state legislation could override whatever, whatever we had.
It could preempt, it would preempt it, but I don't think that should be any type of guide for us since it's naturally, you know, inexact. Okay, any public participation on this issue? So that's closed, public participation. Would anyone like to make a motion? And if we are to have a motion, I think it should take into account Aaron's suggestion.
Again, this is a recommendation.
Yep, a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to the city commission.
So I would make a motion that we recommend to the city commission 180-day moratorium on short-term rentals defined as anything less than 28 days, allowing planning commission review of short-term rental policy in Huntington Woods.
Guys, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you for that, Aaron. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thanks, Aaron, that was a really good motion. Okay, the next item is the site plan review for the home at 26028 Huntington. So who's here for that? Why don't you come forward, introduce yourselves. So who's here for that? Once, once you come forward, uh introduce yourselves. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Kathy George. Uh, my husband and I, my husband Jeff and I, and our son Danny reside at two six zero two eight Huntington Road. And we are here to uh seeking approval of a site plan for an addition.
Okay, uh, do you guys want to present or do you want Hank to give us the lay of the land?
Hank could do that.
I can, you know, if it, if it'd be more convenient, you have to go ahead with what I was gonna say, and then of course you could add some eyes, cross some p's, questions, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
Anything else you'd like to say before Hank goes? Okay, great. You got the power?
Yeah, at this point in time, Mr. Chairman, it's probably easier to do that and also for the education of the public. So basically what we have here is the house at the corner of two six oh two eight Huntington, it's at the corner of Huntington and Lincoln. The house, thank you, Sheldon. The house in and of itself, uh basically, if you'll remember, came before you in the not too distant past with a more ambitious project than was being proposed at this point in time. Uh, last time, there was garage considerations, there was uh side yard setbacks, there was all kinds of things. And at this point in time, um what they're requesting is a lesser modification of the house, but you'll notice that there are going to be significant changes. Like when you take a look at your plans, you'll see the use of wood on the outside of the building is kind of an architectural uh feature for that. The uh height proposed is still fifteen feet, even though the height in the zone district is thirty five feet. Uh, this is a ranch, so it won't be any higher. The front yard, still leaves the front yard setback, does not need any variances. The side yard does have a legal non-conforming setback at four point nine feet with twenty three point eight five feet total. The rear yard, um here, well, let me get, let me get, let me do this and I'll get back into that here. So uh basically what we have here is lot coverage is at twenty percent, which is significantly less than twenty five percent allowed. And the maximum house size is under at thirty eight hundred, thirty square feet, with the maximum permitted would be thirty, uh forty three hundred and change. The house is of significant lot size at over eighteen thousand square feet, encoposed with brick and siding, although the siding material is used, uh appears to be a form of like a cedar or a redwood. Is that what you use for cedar?
Cedar.
Yeah, so it's similar, and a similar house, uh with the effect of that house has been already on Lincoln. So you can kinda see, if you know the house I'm talking about, it's on Lincoln, uh borders Wyoming and Huntington. So you can kinda see how the wood effect plays off of the, the basements. Pardon me? Right, in Lincoln, it's on Lincoln between my own, Earl Fishman's house. So um for that type of thing, so that you understand where that is. So basically what they've done here, and I'll give you the overview, this is the area here that the addition is encompassing. Previously encompassed area over in here, which is not going to be done. So you have this area in over here. Now, when you take a look at it, this is an aerial from the back. So what they're looking at is the porch area in here and this area here. This over here really doesn't show you where that is, but this would be Huntington and this would be Lincoln over here. So you get an idea of what's going on with that. This would be the front elevation here, and you would see the bump out on this corner, and that would be taking the cedar siding, which would add architectural features to the house in the front. And you'll note the roof that comes off over here. This area here would be worked, reworked as well. This would be the Lincoln side, so that you can see here that the features come on. Uh, it's a rear quarter shop, but you can kinda see here how this theme has been carried through the entire house on both elevations. So they're treating both elevations, because they're visible from the road, with what would be considered a three hundred sixty degree treatment of those elevations being affected. Again, we went through that over here and uh, whoops, let me get back to, and pardon me for this, but here. So here you have the floor layout over here, where you do have a basement modification and you do have a first floor modification. So what you're looking at there are the plans that basically for a more modest addition for what they have, they're under the square footage. The only thing that we have ambiguity on, that I'm asking the city attorney for clarification on, is we had dropped the minimum, uh the uh ten percent, twenty five percent. For the minimum five to twenty, to fourteen, based on the fact that the entire city was already plotted out that way. So uh during that, however, in the zoning ordinance, in the dimensional, it says minimum five, total fourteen, but it does say ten percent, twenty five percent in some of the written. So I'm asking the city attorney for an opinion on that. Should it be the minimum ten to twenty five percent at that point in time, they would need a variance and they would go before the zoning board of appeal. And uh, Mr. Salmagich has been informed of that, so they're aware of that. So there may be an interpretation that it doesn't need to go. So having said that, that's the only thing. So this project requires significantly less variances that were granted the other time. And the reason that they're back here at all, even though it's a lesser project, is because the one year timeframe had expired and had a vested interest in the private, whether it was securing the permit or getting in the ground with that. So having said that, uh if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer it, as I'm sure they will.
Thanks, Hank.
You bet. Sheldon, would you mind? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh. Anything to add, sir? Okay, uh, public participation, anyone? The public participation is closed. And why don't we start with you, Kim?
Um, so I, I'm missing your kind of pages of um missing that they're not included any longer, any of the things that are outside of the standards or guidelines in this.
Do, yeah, those, no, because they're, we've all made them part of the ordinance.
Okay, so.
So that's why, that's.
So everything fits.
Yeah, it's changing. The only thing is, again, is the interpretation as far as the width on that lot, which is significant, it's a very large lot.
So that would be subject to variance.
That would be something subject to, yeah.
I, I appreciate the, the modest request and the um, the improvements on the home, and I think it's a really nice improvement with this on both sides.
Thank you.
Aaron?
That, on a person, can you, it looks great.
Thank you.
Uh, I appreciate the design. Um, I think it's fine, great.
Thank you. Joe?
Um, I, I have nothing to add, other than I think it's a great design and I like the fact that you're not trying to overbuild everything and really go a little, you know, overboard crazy. Um, so it looks great. I think it's a, an interesting addition to that style of house, and I think it will make it very attractive, and I, I like it.
Thank you.
Love it, it's great.
If Martha likes it, I like it.
Hear that? Better please, Mark.
That's an exacting test you just asked. Uh, but I think the cedar bump up looks great. We have another example of that in our neighborhood, uh, that you've seen, I'm sure. Uh, and it's just a, you know, really elegant design. We appreciate it, we appreciate uh, uh, the less is more approach, particularly than it was the last time a year ago. Um, so with that, I guess I will have a motion.
Move to approve as presented, pending any necessary variances.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passage unanimously, eventually.
Enjoy your houses.
When do you start with construction?
Yeah.
I think I wonder, let's reconsider that one. How long's expected to take? Six months?
Gonna live there? Or gonna short term wrestle?
Good luck, sorry.
Congratulations.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the home on Henry eight six oh one, uh, and welcome, uh, and who is going to give your presentation?
We just wanted to make a, a couple opening comments. I'm Josh Cascade, this is my wife Rebecca. Um, we, uh, just a little bit about us, we grew up in West Bloomfield. Um, we both grew up there but didn't know each other, we met at U of M. Uh, and like unfortunately many people, we left and went to New York and have been there, we thought maybe for a couple of years for work, we've been there for twenty four years. Um, but this has always been home for us and a bit of a dream. Uh, a year ago, we visited friends of which we have many in Huntington Woods, um, on a beautiful day and turned to each other and said, what are we doing? Um, and we decided at that point that our new dream was to move here, not to Michigan, but to Huntington Woods. The beauty of it, um, it's the fact that they're real neighbors, uh, who, with a lot of young families, that where the kids are outside playing with each other, which is how we grew up. And we wanted that outdoor space and space in general for ourselves and for our kids. And um, it spurred something that we couldn't stop talking about, and here we are. Um, we just wanna say we respect everything about this city and um, it's very important to us. Our first words to young and young who we hired, where we have no idea what we're doing, but we don't want something that sticks out. Um, or is a problem for our neighbors in any way, we're not those people. Um, when we saw the street, Henry, especially this block, we fell in love with it. Uh, we were very fortunate that we met the nicest people I've ever met before, the Fritzons. And they literally, we bonded, um, and they said, hey, you have a young family, it's time for you to have the rich life that their family had. They're the best people. Um, and one of the things, and this is very important for us, we've given you designs, um, that we think fit the houses and lots on that street, which are, I think, a little unique. Um, and we need a little bit of extra space because we both are gonna work at home. My wife um is writing a book, she teaches at Columbia, um, I teach at Yale, I work in private equity finance. We're coming home to both teach at Michigan, but we're both gonna work out of the home. My wife, again, is writing a book, and my industry doesn't exist here, so I'm effectively gonna have my own satellite office, not people coming in and out, and certainly no Airbnb, BnBs. We can tell you war stories about that, um, living in New York. So that, that's it. Um, we're learning about this process, um, and we're gonna let Hank and the young and young people have come to, to help represent us. But if obviously if you have questions for us, uh, we're here to answer them too.
Thank you very much. Welcome to have you home.
Thank you.
Uh, young and young, would you like to present or would you like Hank to go first? Your choice.
Um, what do you recommend, Hank?
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead, then if I fill in anything, you know, that you don't, you certainly can have, you certainly can comment after I'm done too. So this is, this is a discussion, the goal here would be to make sure that everybody gets everything that they need to say said.
Can, can we sit here or something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever you want.
So lots of youngs.
There's one of us that's not so young.
Uh, so we are young and young architects. My name's Todd Young, um, partner father, Don Paul Young, and my brother Roger Young.
Wow.
So it's young, young, and young really, but it starts to sound like Chinese takedown or something, so we limited it to two youngs. Um, we are so, uh, feel so privileged to be here, um, many reasons. One, um, Josh and Rebecca are, and you've, you've just met them, uh, they're just phenomenal people and um, we're, we're really lucky to have a client like them. Um, and this would be our first home in Huntington Woods. So we, we, we are privileged to do that, we know that, we're privileged to do a home, um, anywhere in the state of Michigan, but this is special for us. We, we're in Bloomfield Hills, but uh, this is our backyard, um, so it's an exciting um, event for us and our office, our office staff. And um, and we get to hang out together on another project, so that's super. So Josh mentioned unique site, um, most of our sites are unique, we, we are a design oriented firm, no two buildings are alike, no two clients are alike, uh, no two municipalities are alike. We've probably done homes in maybe fifty to eighty different municipalities in Michigan, across the state, Caribbean, uh, Canada. Uh, so we understand the uniqueness of, of the different environments and the ordinances that we have to um, respect. And respect is a, is an important word for us. We understand the need for ordinances. We, we ourselves have been on boards and have actually written um, language for resort communities, so we understand the need for um, we call it controlled freedom. Um, uh, let people have freedom to design and create and, and express themselves. Uh, Josh and Rebecca have been very clear about wanting their personality expressed in this home, which is, is, as you can tell already, very, very, um, very chill, very zen. And, and that's why they, they gravitated towards your, your community, and that particular site, honestly, that site is phenomenal. Uh, we learned from this gentleman how to be site specific, and so, um, so what?
And client specific.
Yes.
And then, I could go on and on for architecture, because I've been doing this for like sixty five years and enjoying every moment. And every moment of being involved with humanity. And every moment of achieving unity and continuity between mankind, which is now human beings, you know, it used to be man, I mean. But harmony and continuity is extremely important. And you people and your predecessors should be very proud of yourselves in accomplishing what you have here in this community. Because it's been many, many, many years since I've been back into Huntington Woods. And it's been a joy, an absolute joy to be here and see the diversity and the control that you've imposed upon those who need control. And we are not here to abuse your, your creation here, because it's, it's wonderful and it's unique. The client did not mention that they had looked all over this area north of Nine Mile Road, eight or nine or ten miles. For a large site, because they, they did wanna build something a little larger than small, even larger than medium. As most of the clients do these days, because clientele is larger, humanity is larger, the need to supply spaces for them. Bathroom spaces are probably much larger than typical in this community or in most communities. Um, closet spaces are larger, hallways are no longer three feet wide. And spatial, spatial joy, not being boxed in in every room. That's typically what architecture has been about for two hundred years or so, and it did make sense two hundred years ago. But spatial continuity with indoors and outdoors takes a little more space, and life can be beautiful with it. But our, our, and I will let Todd take over again, because he speaks more profoundly than I do.
No, listen to that.
But when we plan a house, it's a very natural looking condition. It is, it is not a large box or a small box or a medium box. And typically, it's not a strongly vertical, it's very relaxed and very natural. And so that's generally the direction that we, we would choose to go here and make it absolutely perfectly harmonious with the existing neighborhoods. And, and a great part of those existing neighborhoods, because you have diversity here and it's wonderful.
Thank you very much. Would you continue?
So, so what we're, what we're asking for is for you to allow us, I believe Hank will maybe correct me, to allow us to go to the zoning board. And, and state our case of how this house is very fitting for your community and very fitting for the Cascades. Um, we've looked at, we've looked at every home in the community basically, and we think that we, we found a, a solution that fits their desire for how they wanna live. Uh, breaking up the house daylight, they need daylight, they've lived in New York City for too long, and they need connection with nature. Um, the house just to the south to hu- us, the Saxy home, um, it's Hudson. Um, we, we love that house, and um, that's a fairly recent house for Huntington Woods and a very. and that's a fairly recent house for Huntington Woods, and a very quality in design and construction. And we've actually found that the stats in our house are very similar to that house. Our frontage compared to their frontage of the site is almost the exact percentage, our lot coverage is almost the exact percentage, our building height is actually slightly smaller, our square footage is almost identical, and yet we have a lot that's twenty to twenty-five percent bigger. So what we're asking the zoning board to consider is, can we put something of the scale of a normal home to the south on a lot that's twenty-two percent bigger, and only partially that's twenty-two percent bigger, when the house itself is just slightly bigger? And we think it's a reasonable request, and the reason our home is slightly bigger is because we have pulled it apart to give daylight the ability to come in, we have a big enough lot to screen it from the neighbors. You wouldn't be able to tell the size of the lot from the street just because of the size of our property, the amount of plant material. We've actually done studies, computer studies, and in taking a thousand square feet out of it, you cannot visually tell the difference. The ordinance, the way that it's writ, will force us to, if we're, and this might be for the zoning board, but if we're forced to abide by the square footage, it basically means taking spaces out of the second floor, the grandparents' bedroom, Rebecca's office, and putting them in the basement. And we can do that, but it would have no effect on the mass and scale of the house, the house could literally be the same mass, and yet we're forced to put these functions in the basement, and no one would know the difference if they were upstairs or not. So we think we have a really valid argument that the zoning board would consider listening to.
Anything else, sir? Ready?
Yes.
It's all right, Mr. Chairman, I do have an additional powerpoint that perhaps can Okay, so basically what we have here is, we have a very good-sized lot on Henry, and I want to preface by saying that the people from Young &amp; Young have been very nice to work with. They do understand that what they're asking for is a substantial size difference than what we currently allow, but again, they feel that they make their case based on what was allowed there before and what already exists in the neighborhood. What the function of tonight is going to be, because this is typically what we would call a preliminary site plan review, they're not asking for a final site plan review because, one, we don't know whether or not the size difference is going to be granted by the zoning board of appeals, should you decide to pass it on to the ZBA, and that would significantly impact the house that would go there. So that's one of the things. Basically, what we're asking for you to do is to approve the configuration, the size, the layout, the bulk, and then, once they get their zoning board of appeal approval, assuming that that comes, they would then come back to the planning commission with the final details all flushed out. And again, I would let you know, Todd, if you feel free to stop me any time if you have a question or point that you'd like to interject. So they do have three variances, and one is significant, it's a maximum house size of fourteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet. The previous zoning ordinance would have allowed fifty-five-hundred square feet for that neighborhood. Currently, you're seeing a house that's proposed to you, which I will point out was originally over six thousand square feet, which they have removed significant square footage to get down to the fifty-eight-seventy-two that it comes before you at right now. What I've done in your packet, as you can see, is I've laid out what's there, what they have, and what's proposed, and also what's in the neighborhood. So this is the house...
Is that the existing?
This is the existing house right here in the corner, this is what's proposed here. And again, if you take a look at the plans that you've received, there are some trees that are coming out, there are also some trees that are being saved as a result of this, and there's also a fairly extended planting schedule that appears to be on the plan. This right here is the area of the house. These are the neighboring houses and their layouts that they were, that they have supplied. And this came in just a little bit ago, but I was able to put it on the slide so that you can visualize the configuration and the size and scale of the houses to the lots. This lot here, which is the proposed lot, is the largest in the neighborhood. These are the elevations here that you can see, here is a front elevation, and they've introduced some difference in the planes, window sizes, scale, also in materials on the front of the house for architectural detailing and accent. This right here would be the backside of the house, which you can see some more of the ornamentation carried around the structure, and including also a chimney detail, which is indicative of the higher-end architecture. Here you have an elevation that would be seen to the house that would be more towards Lincoln. Here's the elevation that you have that we've seen to the house that's more towards Salem, the side elevations. And these are the addresses that would see both of those, and I believe both of the owners of those houses are here tonight, so if they had any comments, certainly the planning commission would be wanting to receive those. Here's the reduced square footage, and this is a streetscape perspective of what you're looking at from the house with a quarter view on the house. Quarter views are nice because they give you a dimensional look at the house and the structure, and it also lets you see more than just a one-dimensional plane, so it gives, it kind of brings the thing to life, so they've kind of given you renderings for this. And here's another view of that, which is from the other side, and this would be the garage area in over here. So when you take a look at the houses here, this is the lower-level house here, and this connects all the way out, correct me if I'm wrong, but then this correct, go all the way out to the proposed accessory structure for the pool equipment?
Yeah, and that is optional, so we, it may or may not need to be connected.
Right, and that was below grade, but I did want to point it out that by having this here, it did allow you to connect from the basement to that, and allow you to better facilitate the use of the pool and the equipment that would take to do that, as well as storage.
I'm sorry, Hank, just to clarify, that's a hundred percent below grade?
Yes.
This is, yes.
Okay.
So what you're seeing here, you're not going to see.
Right, right.
You're just seeing it on an overview. And again, the drawings with details, dimensions, that would be forthcoming at the final, should you feel comfortable enough with this to pass it to the zoning board of appeals for purposes of allowing them to obtain the variances that they need.
Well, I was just clarifying that it was a hundred percent below grade, so it doesn't count towards the square footage being shown.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that kind of gives you an idea of what you're looking for, for one variance. The other variance that they have here, that you're going to see here, is the garage area. And the garage area is going to be, and I have a blown-up slide of that later on, but the garage area is going to need a variance of an additional size. We allow up to six-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and what you're looking at is a variance that's going to require, let's see here, hold on, it was a hundred-and-thirty square feet, no, three-hundred-and-three square feet for the garage. And the detached accessory structure, which is really the pool house, which is connected underground, would need a thirty-square-foot variance in order to do that. Again, the variances, which I will talk about before continuing here, impact the house, they impact the structure. The garage one is on the side, so as far as how it is, is the square footage goes this way, so the extra square footage is back, kind of buried in through here, and you have access points from the garage into the house. This right here is the accessory structure that would need the thirty-square-foot variance. And again, this is not the promise of the planning commission to act as the ZBA, but to understand their need to go to the ZBA. So that should help with that. Going back to the other issues that you have here, is this is a basic layout for the house, this is what you see in the plans, the design incorporates a lot of open space in through here and open to below, which allows for light transfer, the planes and the windows line up to allow for maximum natural lighting. So that's where you're at with this. The second floor, of course, goes to what Mr. Cascade was saying about them both needing to have space to operate, and then she would have a space, Rebecca would have a space up here, and again, he would have an additional space on the other floor. Bedrooms would be kept in this wing over here, as well as the master suite, which would be over on this side, with the central area here being open to below, and having some space for, there's a second floor laundry and other items that they have as far as that goes. The garage plan that we talked about here, which would be normally six-hundred-and-fifty square feet, is over nine-hundred square feet, and I can let them address the need for that, but that's really something more for the zoning board of appeals, and they feel that in today's space, that six-hundred-and-fifty square feet is really not enough to have cars of any size there, and open the doors, and be able to go walk around all the spaces. And again, that's something that should the planning commission see that they may have an argument to make there, but let them go to the zoning board of appeals and plead their case for the three variances that they need. Going on to the next area here, the height of the house is under the thirty-five square feet, the thirty-five lineal feet that's allowed. The front yard setback is more than what's allowed, than what's required. The side yard setbacks, again, with the minimum five, total fourteen, they're offering nineteen on one side, fifty-two total, so they wouldn't need the variance there no matter what.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that one, Hank?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you say, can you explain that?
Which one?
The side?
The side yards is the minimum five, total fourteen. It's the same question that we're asking for the last person that was in here for that, and upon clarification, they wouldn't need that, because the front of the house, the front of the lot where you take your lot line dimensions are, is significantly narrow, as a lot is more pie-shaped in configuration. So the likelihood that they would actually need a variance once determined for that would be, would be up to, it would be unlikely that they would need that in any case. The rear yard here, that's supposed to say sixty-three square feet, but it doesn't, but in any case, they significantly meet the rear yard of that. The lot coverage is less, well less than what they have, the house goes up, not so much out, so if you take a look at what that is, that's a fifteen percent. The house size is permitted at forty-four-twelve with the new zoning ordinance, and currently is proposed at fifty-eight-seventy-two, which will require a variance with the, also the understanding that part of the case that they would intend to make or would make to the zoning board of appeals, is that previously the house next door and other houses on the block are of significant size, most of which are over the forty-four-twelve square feet now, and the house next door being just a bit over the fifty-five-hundred square feet that was the old zoning ordinance when that house was built back in two thousand and six. So that's where they're at with this. The comparisons for the houses next door, this is the south neighbor here, the lot dimensions, and again, the IRR stands for irregular, because I would love to tell you all these lots are rectangles, it would make life easy, but there's not one of them that is. So as a result, each lot has a uniqueness and character and characteristics, which is taken into consideration during the approval of the house that was built in two thousand and six at this particular address. With the lot area of just over twenty thousand square feet, this lot here at twenty-five is significantly over that, and the style here is a Tudor Revival, this is a modern style of architecture, with a Tudor Revival structure on the other side as well. All the houses have two stories, the house to the south was brick and stone, this is brick, and there's some siding, correct me if I'm wrong.
Actually, siding or stucco.
Right.
We're looking both ways.
Right. But the house at eighty-six-twenty-one, which is a brick house with Tudor Revival, which also has some stucco accents to it. All of the houses have attached garages, they all have attached garages. What you're really talking about here is the size. I will point out that this particular address here, which is the existing house that was built in two thousand and six, received several variances for different things that happened and came up during the course of construction, during the course of planning, which brought to light the fact that even though you do have a new construction, sometimes there are variances needed in order to make things work out. So having said that, there are some issues that you have with the house, you do have a house that is significantly over what we normally would see in the city and in that particular zone district. You do have a style of architecture, which, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Young could explain better than I to you, so we would let them do that. But the idea of having a temporary house that would fit in with Tudors, we have that on Henry even further down, and a lot of it has to do with diversity in architecture and not wanting to have the same things, whether you're in favor of a variance or you're not in favor of a variance would be almost irrelevant. What it does do is it adds, should you approve it, or even if they rescale it, the plan that they've proposed for you tonight does show a significant amount of attention to detail on the architecture. So having said that, I'm certainly available to answer any questions you might have to the extent that I can, and the Youngs, I'm certain, would be able to answer any, and if not, I'm sure the Cascades would be happy to as well.
Before we open it up for public participation, gentlemen, would you like to add anything to what Hank said or what you previously said?
We'd like to, Hank has been a joy to work with as well, I'd like to reciprocate that. Yeah, the style is a soft contemporary, the hip roof for us is a very forgiving, kind of massless roof, it falls away, it's very soft. We do plan on showing you some wonderful details that are more transitional. This, we wouldn't call this house modern, again, soft contemporary, transitional. In the development of the plans, you'll see that the client is very interested in things that are natural, so we're looking natural materials, timeless materials, it's going to be, this is going to be a world-class house, there's going to be quality materials, maintenance-free materials, and we're excited to continue on.
Thank you. Anything else?
Might I add?
Sure.
It hadn't been mentioned previously, I don't think, that the client looked for a large lot in all of the areas north of here, many, many fine lots that would accommodate the living space that he feels he requires. Most of those large lots may or may not have required a variance of any kind, and we do not enjoy coming in, asking for variances, because typically, the ordinances that you and every other organization have put in place make one hundred percent sense, and they, you have created a beautiful community here. But of all the lots that they looked at, they came back to Huntington Woods and says, this is where we would like to live and raise our children, and that's a major factor, I honestly believe, for them and certainly for your community. And I think the size of the house actually is complementary to your community, and I really believe it increases the value of every, every person in this community, because it's not going to be ostentatious, it's just going to be a wonderful, natural-looking twenty-first century house that is harmonious with everything in the neighborhood, and I'm serious about that. We do houses all over the country and outside of the country, and the houses that we do in Michigan do not compare with the houses that we do in Colorado or Florida or on and on. It'll be very sensitive to the being compatible and a wonderful addition to your community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to add before we open it up for public participation? Okay, we'll open it up, anyone like, would anyone like to address this, make a comment?
I am Jerry Ecker, I'm at the eighty-six-twenty-one Henry address, I'm the north house on this. So I would agree with Mr. Young on one thing, that the zoning laws and the restrictions make one hundred percent sense, and I agree with that. What the younger Mr. Young didn't talk about was the fact that Todd's house to the south is the fifty-seven-hundred square feet, and he's got the smallest of the three lots that are there. Our lot at eighty-six-twenty-one is the largest of the three lots, and our house is just under four thousand square feet. So I'm concerned about the size differential between their house and mine, and then, and I'm not sure, and the Young &amp; Young architects have done a wonderful job, and it's a fabulous design, but I'm concerned about the modern aspects of it, sitting in the middle of it, and I don't know exactly how far out Hank it sits, and I don't know where the depth is from the street back and whether it's...
Yeah, you're going to be forty-three feet from the front.
And what's Todd's and mine?
But that I don't know, but you're, you're looking at forty, forty-point-six to yours, and for Todd, you're looking at fifty-five-point-nine, and they're going to be at forty-three-point, you know, forty-three-point-three.
So you're sticking further out? So they're sticking further out from Todd's house?
So they're actually gonna be back from the road further than you. And they'll be sticking out a little bit further than Todd, um with the understanding that there's a radius on him.
But they're sticking fifteen further feet out from Todd?
Yes, but it's not on a plane.
Okay.
So that's that that's, it's hard to visualize, but yeah, that's if, to the extent that this would help you. I don't know if you s-
Yeah, I get it, okay. But that's my concerns. You know, it's a nice design and they're nice folks and they went to Camp Tamarack and that's a pretty good thing. But I have those concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
It's like you're talking about my house. I have to gotta come here and say something.
We saw you there, Dave.
We want a tour.
How are you?
Todd Sacks, eight-five-seven-seven Hendry for the record. Um first of all, you're number one. Um I know it's too late, but I think this forty-five hundred square foot uh limit is crazy, but I my issue, not yours. Um I support them building a house, a sized house that they're proposing to build. And with fifty-five or fifty-seven, fifty-hundred square feet, that's not my issue, I think it's great. Um I support their design. I think you're the best, the finest contemporary architects in the city, and I know that they will design a phenomenal house. I happen to love diversity of architecture in our community, so to put a contemporary house there, I think is spectacular. So I have my full support on that, so whatever they can do, the city can do to help accommodate that is my support. However, and I've already expressed this to to my friends over here, um I don't feel, though they have the right to go to forty feet from the front. I do think it is too far forward, and even when I looked at it, it does appear to be encroaching a lot. I know when we did our house, we actually set our house way further back because we really were very sensitive to that radius there. And I think that radius is really important. Um and if you look where the Fritz and House is now, my guess is you're probably fifteen or twenty feet in front of where the Fritz and House is now. Um and so that's my only concern. If I were gonna express any concern would be how far forward it is. However, they're within the rights to do it, so they can do what they want with that front. But uh as far as the size, I totally support it and I think it'd be great, so.
Thanks, Hank.
Start constructing.
Anything else, anyone else?
Uh Steve Bearman, uh two-six-zero-six-six Hendry. I'm on the block uh to the north of this. And I sit across the street from a contemporary house, and I think that it fit well into the neighborhood. And it's a newer contemporary house, and I think that it was um, it worked out well. The materials are good and the construction was good, and I think that that is not uh a negative. I wanna address something that unfortunately does not come under uh the purview of this commission. Uh it could have had things been a little different about five years ago, but I address it only so that it implants an idea in your head that may move in some direction in the future, and I hope you find this of of interest. I counted some sixty-some trees on the lot, of which nearly half of them of significance are gonna be removed. Uh I counted the following, I think identifies the problem. A one-twenty-two inch oak, one-twenty-five inch oak, one-twenty-eight inch oak, one-thirty-three inch oak, one-twenty-nine inch oak, one-fifteen inch oak, one-twenty-three inch oak. There, all these trees will be removed. Um we have lost, in the twenty years that I've lived on Hendry, I would estimate two to three dozen oaks of this size. Um this was an issue the planning commission identified, I don't know, maybe five, six years ago, and they took a stab at it. And uh I ask that um the planning commission become sensitive uh to to this issue. And uh that's all I want to uh communicate tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to participate?
May I say something?
Uh sure.
You mentioned thirty trees that had to be removed. Seven of them are substantial trees. That leaves quite a number left that are still substantial trees. And I'm sure we would be happy to replace as many trees and not not a hundred-year-old trees or fifty-year-old trees, but replace trees to compensate for the one that we're removing.
Thank you for that commitment.
And also, the 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 front elevation that's set back from the street is from the nearest portion of the front of our house to the road. The other, and there's actually, there's five undulating masses in the front. The other four receive for the road, so that, and and we are sensitive to that, believe me. We we do not wanna make the house a a feature of Huntington Woods. We wanna make it a simple, nice composure.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just wanted to address Steve's comment, uh just very briefly. I wanted to tell you that I appreciate very much your understanding of the type of trees that could potentially be removed. And though I understand very much your comment of we will replace trees, a twenty-three inch, a thirty-inch oak tree takes a long time to grow. And the trees that are being put in to replace these trees, because we want a larger canopy, our our fast-growing trees and things like that, and that's lovely, but they're not the same as the stately oak trees that are being removed. And I say this from personal experience, that I had a neighbor take down a two-hundred-year-old oak tree, leaving an incredibly big hole in the sky and a yard that had originally been in shade completely in sunlight. So it's not something that can be replaced with fading in a tree. It's not something that can be replaced with a fast-growing tree. And so I'm not commenting about what you're taking down or not taking down, but Steve, I just wanna let you know that I don't think that all of us are insensitive to that. I know that I am not insensitive to that and that it is something that we have to maintain because we are Huntington Woods. And Huntington Woods does, you know, maple trees have a short lifetime. They don't live extended periods of time. Oak trees do. And when you take them down, you can plant another one, but you won't see it grow to the height of the of the mature trees that are here now. That's all I wanted to say.
We won't.
As much as Joe commented, I just wanna also remark that I believe all the trees I listed that are being removed, there were seven of them that I counted. These are century or two-century trees. These trees were here before that house was built that's there right now. I think that there were three trees of significance that I counted on the plan that are being saved. So uh two-thirds or more of the stately trees are being removed. Uh I know that it is not part of the ordinance, and theoretically, I don't believe that this commission has the ability to dictate that. What I'm saying unfortunately is uh I wish that there was a little bit more consideration, and you do have the power to change the ordinance as we move forward into the future. Unfortunately, in situations like this, we lose uh, you know, thousands of years worth of tree growth that'll never be replaced in our lifetime, your children's lifetime. Maybe your children's children might get to see what the Youngs uh intend to replace these with. Uh so that's my concern. Plus, there's, you know, dozens of other trees that are five, seven, eleven, thirteen, fifteen inches that are not oaks that now populate that site that are gonna be removed. I think it would be a significant, significant change in the street state.
Thank you, your point's quite clear, appreciate it.
I'd like to dovetail on that too, because I was on the original historic district study committee, and this area, this hill area is a beach ridge that was pushed up during the glacial age. And that's why these oak trees have done so well here and prospered, because it's a sand base, and it's the only part of Huntington Woods that has that sand base. And I think it's a real pity to lose these large caliber oak trees, these century-old oak trees, um when we can build around them. And people are too easily swayed and think that they can replace with things like arbor byde, which just don't do the trick. So I'm asking you two to consider what you're doing in terms of your landscape and see if there's in some way that these trees can be saved.
Thank you. Uh we're still in public comment. Uh would anyone else like to make further public comment before I close it? Okay, it's gonna be closed. And what we will do is start with Sheldon.
Can I, please make one more comment?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I guess I'm. So we didn't understand what this process was. I'm I'm embarrassed that our neighbors met us in City Hall. Um but I can tell you that we're not building a house that is in an area next to the street that Todd, you don't like. And there's no way, I'm, I don't know what a tutor is, but we'll show you our plans. I don't know, but we're definitely gonna talk to you about it and hear anything you have to say. And we're definitely not gonna build an ugly house. Um and the trees, I gotta tell you, Howard himself said, a couple of these trees are dying. If you look at the top of some of these trees, they're falling on the property, including the house. And he's got wood stacked up. I said, where does this come from? It's 'cause the trees, a couple of these trees are falling apart. So there's a risk for my family we have to consider, but I'm gonna go tree by tree. We did not know until this that something's being removed that is a hundred years old. We're gonna go tree by tree, and if we're to redesign the house to save two trees, we will. So for what that's what, there's one last thing I wanna tell you. I'm sorry, I know this is probably dragging on. I I, we live in an eight hun- eighteen-hundred square foot house. I drove down a street, I saw beautiful lots and I saw the houses. I don't know the difference between a three thousand or a four thousand or five, I haven't lived in a house since I was fifteen. Um but there is one thing you should know that, first of all, Hank represents this city so well. I called him out of the blue, I said I'm so-and-so, and he helped me understand all these things. But I went to your website and I clicked on the city ordinance, and it said, and I'm a math guy, so I ran a bunch of numbers, and I said, this lot's so big, I can build six thousand two hundred and thirty-six square-foot house up to a maximum of fifty-five hundred square feet. Except, I made a mistake. My mistake's not Hank's, none of anyone else's, is I relied on my own math and my own search of the website. But if you click today, it has the rules up until January seventh, two thousand and eighteen. That needs to be fixed, because someone else is gonna just click on the website and see the old rules.
When did you buy that property?
Uh April, April.
Of this year?
Twenty-six. And I didn't, this is on me. I should have relied only on what I was hearing from Hank. I'm just telling you that we bought this house because we saw the sexy house, A- Ackers, you have a lovely big home. I had no idea it was any smaller than what we were proposing. I I I just see what I see on the street. These are big lots and big houses. On this one street, there's no block like this in Huntington Woods. And so anyways, that's, and so I didn't know the rules had changed. A forty-four hundred square foot house, sounds like it's plenty big. I can tell by your bottom names, that's a big house. I don't, but all I know is that cap of a lot bonus is capped at a lot that's half our size. I saw plenty of houses that felt like a stuffed shirt, like they took every inch possible and built a giant box that went all the way back to the end of the property. I said, no way, I'm not doing that. That's not this lot. And the lot itself, I literally is so big that we could split it in two and build two forty-four hundred square which we would never do, we're not doing that. But the point is that these new rules cap lot size. Take the lot size out of account, once you get to a lot that's half the size of this. That that's all, the only point I wanna, and someone's gotta change the website so that it says forty-four hundred square feet is the most you can build. But that's on me.
There's a link for the new zoning ordinance. What happens is, is that Munich Code hasn't codified the new ordinance yet, so it doesn't go on the Munich Code. But there's a, there's a separate link for it, and I can understand how.
It's buried in a PDF.
Your ingenuousness is clear and it's appreciated, so thank you. Uh we understand your acting is one hundred percent good faith. Uh and uh completely, so thank you for your comments. Um Sheldon.
Okay. Um I'm 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 struggling with this. And the reason I'm struggling with this has nothing to do with the quality of the architecture, the quality of the materials, the the dedication and hard work that have gone into the approval, the the counseling with Hank and all the rest of that. I am left with the feeling that it's not been changed, notwithstanding all the all the feel-good that's gone on here and 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 that is sincere, that this is too big. We've worked very hard to create standards that have to do and it's been, I don't know how many meetings, six, eight meetings, working on dimensions and house sizes and heights and all the rest of that stuff. And I don't see anything here that justifies a departure from that. Now, to some extent, those are zoning board issues, and I recognize that. But I can also take in, legitimately take into account, as a planning commission function, the proportionality in in terms of the neighborhood and the um the soft-modern. I I have no idea what any of the, any, I have no idea what a tutor is, I have no idea. I live in a Dutch colonial, I couldn't recognize, I couldn't differentiate it from a, I don't know. I I have no idea what a mansard roof is. But but the bottom line is, um I don't think it's in character to the neighborhood, and I don't think that it is in proportion to what else is in the neighborhood. Whether it would have been allowed under previous ordinance, we worked real hard on making the changes that we made and and that resulted in a reduction of the available house sizes, and that was a very conscious decision on our part. And it was adopted by the city commission. The city commission wants to change it, that's okay. I'm, I'll go along with that, but that's not what sits there. Um question, Hank, does this involve whatever bonuses might be available for architectural?
Based on the dimensions that I have, the house will get all the architectural bonuses. So they'll get that, they'll get the lot size bonuses.
So the forty-four hundred includes all of that.
Predicated on assumption that they were gonna get all that.
But it won't get the detached garage bonus.
It will not get the detached garage bonus, but you can still get all those bonuses up to a maximum of six hundred square feet, which is what we.
Okay, anyway, that's that's my comment about this particular construction. I mean, it's it's a gorgeous house, and it, and no doubt it will be a gorgeous house. But um anyway, that's where I sit.
Hank, can you speculate as to roughly how many or what percentage of houses in Huntington Woods are, you know, hit that north of five thousand fifty-five hundred square foot mark?
A handful.
Okay. Um I I don't know that I'm gonna say anything that's hasn't already been said. I think it's too big, I think it looks massive. I think when we take the trees out in front, it's going to be a big hole on that street with a big, massive looking house. I'm probably the biggest fan up here of contemporary and modern houses, so I love that you're doing something that's uh that's different, but uh it's it's too big for that street, it's too big for that lot, and it looks, the masses is is too much. And I also don't like how close it is to the street.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Um I think that I have to echo what Sheldon says. We put a lot of thought, a lot of fight, a lot of negotiation, a lot of time, taking differing opinions when we created the new ordinances. It is a beautifully designed house. I look at your 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 plan, and I look at your need for or your want for large. And then I hear you say, well, I can't tell how big it is, it really, it's just a house. Um it, even had we been at the ordinance before we changed it, it was still over. This is still over what the pre- the previous ordinance would have allowed. So you were, you would have been asking for this variance either way. I have no problems with your materials. I understand that you're trying to design something that you feel goes with the neighborhood, and it it's not the style of home that I object to. It's not your use of space or your use of light or anything like that, I'm not criticizing that in any way. But I am going to echo what the other three have said, that it is too big. It is too big, it is, and 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 the thing is, you're not actually just asking for to increase the house size, but it's also the garage styles, and it's also the the pool house, the mechanical pool house section. There's, you're you're asking for more square footage on everything. And so I I do. And so I do object to the size of the house, not the styling, not the quality of the materials, not the design, but the size of the house. And your plans are calling out, and I actually do feel we have to address the big hole that will be put in the sky when this hap, you know, if and when you do this, because I look at your tree schedule that you have here, and yes, you are keeping a lot of trees. You're keeping small elms and pines and cherries and small things, but you are taking out six oak trees that will not regenerate in the next hundred years. They just won't. You can put an oak tree in, you can put another oak tree in, but you can't spade in an oak tree. An oak tree has a carrot-type root, and you can't spade it in. So you, though you might plant an oak tree, you cannot spade one in. So it's not like you can move any of these trees. It's not like you could put in a mature, you know, a bigger oak tree. It won't ever happen, because you cannot move those kinds of a tree. So that just makes me sad, actually. That part of it makes me sad, but that's just a personal statement, because I know we're not addressing that. But I do feel that the house is too big, too close to the street, and just overall, too massive. And I think that we have to not set the precedent of we just passed new ordinances that we worked very hard on, and then say, "Yeah, we're just going to let this one slide." I don't think we can. It's too big.
Thank you. Martha.
I agree with the other commissioners. It's too big, too close to the street. I think you're so lucky in having such a large lot with so many beautiful trees and the opportunity to have that breathing space, which many of us don't have, especially in the Bronx. And I'd like to see you tone it down. I also am concerned with the amount of coverage of the lot that you do have. I'm always a big proponent in wondering where the water's going to go. You're at the top of the hill, and you have people that will be below you, and the more ground coverage you have, the less place for water to soak in. And we don't have as many trees, according to your plan, that are going to soak up that water, and it's got to go somewhere. So that's something else I'm concerned with.
Erin.
So every equation is imperfect, especially on the outlying edges of it. But that being said, the difference between what you could argue as something being three times the minimal lot in this district and the size of this house is just too extreme for me. I could see arguing up a bit, but I can't see fourteen hundred square feet additional.
Thank you.
I agree. We worked hard on the ordinance. I think there's room in the ordinance for those exceptions. I don't think it's a cut and ride. Everything fits every rule, and this would be a perfect, I think, example of taking it to ZBA to request a variance. But I do think that the size is too large, at thirty-three percent over the existing ordinance size. It's extreme, even if it were at the previous size, it's above. It is a large lot. You might have luck with the ZBA. The bigger challenge that I'm facing, too, is that in order to support that kind of endorsement for the zoning board of appeals, is to see a finished product, so that I can tell exactly what I'm saying is going to be there. And while I have, I actually do trust what occurred from Young &amp; Young and from the homeowners, but without seeing it, to say, "This is what we're going to get, this is going to fit, this is where the trees are going to be, this is the finished product and what it looks like," that I could say, "This is the right time for an exception." I'm not comfortable doing it.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you for your very thoughtful presentation. So much has gone into your plans, and again, your sincerity is really appreciated. We really are thrilled that you want to live here, and you've chosen us. And, you know, obviously, the wind is blowing in a certain direction. I think you can feel the gusts, right? But we are happy that you have selected us as your neighbors. But you have heard something unusual tonight. You've heard three neighbors come in and express concern for different reasons. One was about trees, one was about size and massing compared to the neighbors next door, and the other was the frontage and how much space between you and the street, which is very unusual for us to hear neighbors come in and, under these circumstances, uniformly express those concerns. We are not regularly confronted with three very material variances that we're asked to look beyond. Maybe one. I can't remember two, but I'm sure there's been two, but they're de minimis. And we have three big ones right here. And so what you've got is the sense that this is in many important ways, you know, an outlier. And that's one of the reasons why people feel so uncomfortable. We ask that when you're redesigning, to take into account the concern that, while we recognize the need for flexibility, to have us presented with outline characteristics on so many different fronts is something that maybe you can use to plan next round. My personal concern is, as other people have suggested, the ordinance. I'm a lawyer by trade. I'm extremely concerned about precedent. As people are saying, we actually did work for two years on these ordinances, which are very multifaceted. And Todd, you know, is entitled to his opinion about the ridiculousness of a forty-four and change square foot, but your lot isn't, again, such a large lot that we can't tailor the ordinances specifically to it. So maybe forty-four hundred and change is not appropriate for this specific lot, but for given how our lots are classified, we believe very strongly that it was an appropriate size limitation. But that, again, is what the zoning board of appeals is for, to take into account these one-offs, if you will. But again, for me to, you know, say, "Yes, I'm okay with it," immediately after we pass this and establish a precedent for every single homeowner who's going to come before us, as if to say, "What we did for the last two years doesn't matter." Can't do that. And that would not be healthy for the entire community, and it wouldn't be very healthy for this commission's jurisdiction in its integrity. So we've got to protect that, too. So what I personally hope is that you're not discouraged by what you heard tonight, that you listen to what we've said very respectfully, and take that into consideration as you plan again with your wonderful architects, you know, in recognizing that there is a ZBA, but hopefully you won't have to use it. But if you do have to go to the ZBA, you'll do so without being such an outlier on so many different levels. That's my opinion. I think, unless anyone would like the chance to respond to any of that, we're going to move for a vote.
We need a motion.
Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, what you may want to consider at this point in time is that, and not having had a chance to confer with Young &amp; Young or the Cascades, what you may wish to do is you may wish to offer the applicant an opportunity for a table to next month, so that it would save all the notification and everything.
Would you prefer that?
And then that'll allow them some time to do that, and perhaps meet with the neighbors, and maybe slide the house back a few feet, and perhaps come back with something that's palatable for the planning commission and Mr. Cascade as well. And rather than, rather than take a vote, it's just a straight thumbs up, thumbs down type of.
Do you think a month is enough time?
I've never done anything like.
Gentlemen.
Yes.
You do? Okay. And don't be discouraged, because this is an iterative process. It really is.
We're discouraged, but we've never done anything like this. The only thing that I'm discouraged about is someone's sad, and we've got to work on the trees. I hear you. I don't want to hurt trees. We planted, there is nothing we're going to do that hurts, look, that's the only thing that I'm discouraged about, because I don't know what I can do. We're going to work on it.
Again, we thank you for your presentation and your great work. Would you, so we will then entertain a motion to table it for a month. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you again for appearing before us, and we look forward to working with you.
Do you want these back?
Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, wait. Any last-minute public presentation on any matter? No? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Thank you.